That they help us. Um, Saturday.
I do have to say this. When I hear people talk about how Gertown doesn't get any attention, Mary says that a lot. Another woman who spoke the last week, Gertown gets more attention than anybody because it gets CDDG. I don't want to hear that anymore. I don't know what you're comparing that to. Because if you talk to people in Edgewater, they'd tell you that we never give them attention and they're high taxpayers. Look. Good, how are you? Have a nice day for Mother's Day? Yeah, over here. It's a beautiful day. Mm-hmm. Oh, it's nice. I didn't do anything yesterday. Actually, I went to my office yesterday and spent five hours there cleaning off my desk which really I needed to do. So it was, oh my God, it was wonderful going to the office and having, I could see that my desk was wonderful. And I went to, um, went to a pop stop one night. I'm going to try a nice Mother's Day. You did it. Oh, nice. Such a good Mother's Day. Oh, nice. I bet your mom enjoyed it too. It's beautiful. Aww. Aww, okay. Aww, how sweet. Uh, what's he, what's he saying? I tried calling him and, but I'll, I'll try again. Yeah. Yeah, so I'll, I'll give him a call. I know, I know that, um, who did I talk to? To Chris Farmley. He said that he's working on, he's working on an ordinance. Yeah, so, uh, there are certain conditions that he can't address because some people don't have backyards. So there, there are some issues, but he's working on it. He said that it should be presented at one of the June meetings. And then I have to give you information about the Church of the Ascension. Yeah, I, I know. And, but you know, the, the Lakewood Historical Society has a lot of information. And also, the German teacher at the high school is, um, the organist at the church and he's kind of like the archivist too. There have been so many famous people. Honest to God, you should go up there and meet with the, meet with Greg. There are so many famous people that belong to that church. It's amazing. So it, it, it's just fascinating. It's such a pretty little church. So I can have him give you a call because he's like the church organist and he can give you a lot of information. And then I, I think, and I'll find out too, which date in July would be the best date to present it. Because that's when they're having their celebration. Oh, yeah, I, I did resend it. Did you not get it again? Yes.
Apologize for the delay. We will go ahead and call, um, the Housing Planning and Development Committee meeting for, uh, what's today's date? Uh, May twelfth, uh, to order. Uh, the first order of business is the agenda or the approval of the minutes of the April seventh, uh, Housing Planning and Development Committee meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Um, second, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, that's completed and now, um, we have a communication from the administration or from Assistant Director Boss regarding the Lakewood zoning refresh. Um, an update from some of the recommendations. And I'll say that Council President and I have been on the, we call the affectionately the Z-PAC, committee that, that is kind of like, you know, working with the, uh, with the contractor we've selected as a city and then some other folks from Lakewood Alive and the various boards and commissions and some administration folks, um, to kind of get a big picture and kind of narrow it down. And eventually, and I'm sure Director, Assistant Director Boss will talk about this, ultimately the outcome here will be updates to our code. Um, and updates to our, to our code will come in the form of various ordinances. Uh, and so rather than see that dropped on our lap at some point next year, um, I thought, I thought it would be helpful and the administration agreed and so did the Council President to kind of give the council and the public, um, in this forum because, um, you know, we don't televise the Z-PAC meetings, uh, to hear the progress and hear where we're going and provide input if they'd like, um, before we see the ordinance that, you know, ultimately will change our zoning code, which is a big deal. Um, it's how we control land use in the city and it's how we show what we want, uh, as far as development goes. So at this point, I'll throw it over to Assistant Director Boss, um, to go over, well, I think these are the slides from the Z-PAC meeting, but good update for council and then, uh, any questions our colleagues have. Be great. So Assistant Director Boss.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I appreciate the, uh, the opportunity just to come in and kind of walk through this, uh, with everybody uh, who's not part of the committee, which is good, as, as Chair mentioned. These are the slides from the, the Zoning Policy Advisory Committee meeting that we held, uh, in the end of March, I think, uh, March eighteenth. And that was kind of the culmination of, or at least a, having this draft of the preliminary recommendations report, that was for public review. Uh, so that was kind of the, the, we had worked on this, uh, since before the holidays, with Houssail Levine. Um, and then this was kind of the first stakeholder group that we released it and talked through. So these slides are summary. It's a lot. Um, hopefully you had a chance to at least glance at the, the, the report itself because it's a lot. And so I'm going to kind of try to jump through, um, some of these slides just so we can get through it. Um, but I'm, as I get through these things, I'll kind of stop at the, like the, I guess, the big blue breaks you'll see in, in the topics and kind of the flow of the slides. So if there are questions or anything, we can talk about it at that point. And then as we get into the individual recommendation sections, if I could get through the section like on economics, economic development, and then we'll stop and we can talk about all those things in that. Um, and so just so everyone is, um, to baseline everybody, because this is an interesting approach even for Houssail Levine. Most of the time, you know, when a consultant comes in to look at updating a zoning code, it's because the community or the municipality just finished a master plan. I think I might have mentioned this last time when we were talking about this. And so when you have a new master plan, that, that plan obviously lays out changes in different directions and objectives and things like that that make it a little easier to then refine or devise like a new development for a zoning code. Because, you know, item A, B, and C are based on objectives or changes one, two, and three from a master plan. We don't have a master plan. We have the community vision. It's been updated multiple times. And so this is like most things, almost all things that we do, this is central that we try to reference back to it. We try to make sure that we're following it, at least, uh, um, that we're aligned with that vision. And so this, the vision became kind of that master plan piece to this where each section that they went through and they picked, you know, I think it's four individual kind of areas that, that, that the recommendations got binned into that we'll go through. Every one of those sections starts with kind of an alignment with a vision, with the vision. Is it, is this area still aligned with the vision based on what Houssail Levine's contextual view of the city is and, and, and what the vision says versus what's reality in terms of zoning on the ground? on the ground? And so that's kind of how each of these things are caged. Just so you see the broader process, this is step three of seven. So this is a long project. I think we had originally planned on 18 months. It's probably going to run a little bit longer than that, just based on when we get into steps four, specifically four and five and six, it's going to be the very detailed work. District and use standards, number four is probably going to be the heaviest lift out of this whole effort as you go through each of these things, these recommendations, and figure out how to take these recommendations, which ones move forward, which ones don't, elements of recommendations, and how you integrate them into our existing and potentially newly modified district standards moving forward. And when I say the districts, that's the R1s, R2, C1, C2, C3, all of the ML, MH districts that we have, Lagoon District, Industrial District. So are there any questions on the process, or?
Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Assistant Director Boss, for this work. As always, you're thorough and thoughtful, and that's excellent, and gives us a springboard to do some interesting things. So when did the 18 months begin? When was the timer?
Started around, like, August.
Okay, so we're more than six months in?
Yeah. So back in August, we started with the project initiation, community engagement ran, and I'll talk a little bit about the community engagement. That ran in August, and really, we extended it through November, based on kind of the results and the participation that we initially got. And so that was really steps one and two. We had a Z-PAC initial stakeholder meeting back in August, and then that led to where we are now with kind of the step three, the end of step three, getting ready to step into four.
Okay, so my primary question tonight's going to be, how can I approach this work in an effective manner? And this is kind of a multi-layered process about a pretty sophisticated technique to reorganize and improve on the planning, the zoning code, which is, as I understand, not in one place, and also the result of many authors over years. So we want to do all kinds of stuff at the same time. It sounds like it's very much worth our time, and could be a tool, combine a mix of subtle and big changes that could add up to some important improvements for our community. Price of housing might be one of those. There probably are plenty of others, too. So I don't even know how to approach this, because unlike some of my colleagues, you know, planning and development is not my field. The law's not my field. So I need to get more, I need to study up myself. That's kind of my meta-question for tonight. So I have every confidence at the process you're doing. I'll be a student tonight, but really, I'd love to, you know, download, think, but also have, not miss the opportunity, it's always a through line with my questions, is, you know, what I, I'm trying to understand what opportunities that I have as a council person to try to shape and contribute to the process of these work products. And really, the consultants, when we're dealing with water and sewer rates, and a lot of times, capital project design, we're not voting on a feature. We're, we have to work in good faith with a consultant, but I'm not on the daily interface with those consultants. So, you know, in this case, I may find it helpful to, in the next week or three, get a Zoom call with you and the consultant, just to get introduced and share, you know. And I can do my job to convey, hey, here's some goals I'm hoping to accomplish, or I want to express support for some of the goals that you and others, like the council leadership, may have already identified. But that's kind of the through line of the question. So we're already kind of halfway through the process, so you've got a foundation to work with. But since I'm starting from scratch, I don't, you know, I feel like I'm playing catch-up rather than, than something else.
We did have, and just, sorry to interrupt, Councilman Bullock, but we did, because you're mindful of what you're saying. And so it was either November, December, or January. We had a committee hearing about, about kind of the first step. So also, Council President and I are on Z-PAC. I think one other council person could probably come. It wouldn't be a violation of, you know, Sunshine Rules or Open Meetings Act, because it wouldn't be a majority. So I mean, I think there's opportunities for you to engage in that way, too. But that's, that's why I've worked with, and the administration has, I think, saw the wisdom in it and agree, every step here, we come back, and we take our input, we take the public's input. And so this is the second time this committee has seen it in the last four or five months.
Yeah, what my comments are not a glass half-empty criticism. It's more just a direct statement of, you know, how I'm at the beginning stage, and I'm hoping to be able to participate in some insightful and effective way. That's it. So I look forward to, you know, the chances to do that. Maybe I could sit in on one of the Z-PAC meetings, which, while better than another abbreviation, to me, sounds like you have snoring problems or something.
The flu.
If you're, if you're joining. But anyway, you know, maybe I wouldn't be an ongoing member, but could at least sit in on a meeting or two. Thanks. I'll, I'll stop. Thanks.
I will throw out, Councilman, Chair, Mr. Chair, just for everyone, in terms of your involvement, kind of at this point, as we go through these recommendations, if you want to make notes of what you like, what you don't like, like, that's, it's basically, this is a replication of the Z-PAC meeting. And so what you like, what you don't like, if there's something that you're not seeing, that you would like to see, those are all valuable notes at this point in terms of the process. And I don't have to get it from you tonight, but I probably need it within the next, like, two weeks, so I can get it to Houssail Levine, so we can keep this thing moving forward. But that's, that's kind of the purpose of these communications, that we'll continue to come back, provide you with the products that we have right now, so that you can provide your thoughts, recommendations, priorities, kind of back to us, and I can feed that back in the process. So. So I'll move on. Just, this is a quick overview of what happened there in August. We, I'll call it, it was an attempt to have an open house. We had six people. Great feedback from six people, as you can see there, but that is not substantive in terms of an effort of this nature and scope and scale. So what we did was, we extended the online questionnaire. I appreciate the support of the council that we received to push that and continue to reinforce that. Two hundred and fifty-one responses was, according to what we heard from our consultants, was great, based on some of the other municipalities they've been involved with. But that's, that's a fair amount. It was enough for them to get the feedback that they were looking for in terms of the, I guess, the representation scale for them to build it in. They also had multiple stakeholder interviews of different groups. So as you can see, the five different groups, or four different groups that were up there. We had 22 participants across those groups. I know there was some very detailed, good discussion, and some of their recommendations from those, you know, property owners, business owners, different developers. We had a lot of people, former members on Planning Commission, former members on BZA, ABR, that came in and kind of, it was like an airing of grievances, but it was good. We were not present for that. That was run by Houssail Levine, so it was a, kind of, probably a more open conversation than if I was, like, sitting in the corner of the room taking notes.
Under your boss.
But, but they, but that, all of their feedback is also resonant in these recommendations. So, so before I jump in, there any questions on the engagement? There will be engagement in the future. This was just the first kind of initial round. So with that, I'll jump into, like, the report itself. Again, hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. Goes through the themes, and then, and that's what we're going to go through, those, those individual themes first. So the four areas, economic development, housing, community wellness, and mobility, you know, meshes very well with our vision and a lot of the objectives and the areas of the vision. So I will stop at the end of each of these, so that you can, you can ask questions about the individual pieces or recommendations that are, that are contained within there. But within each of these sections, there is a summary of, basically, from an outside perspective, what does our community vision, you know, highlight in terms of this area, in terms of economic development? How does that community vision align with our existing code? And then what are the recommendations to help better align our code with the community vision? So just as you would expect with a master plan or anything, that's, this is their common process that they use. So this is how their recommendations kind of were developed. And then they were bounced back and forth. This is definitely not the version that we started with. A lot of it is from the engagement, from their work, but a lot of it has been, we had our own kind of tweak and things to adjust things, and things that we knew needed to be addressed or looked at based on the last several years of administering the code. And so, and again, disclaimer upfront, not all of these are, you're going to, are going to get implemented, but these are kind of recommendations. They are ideas to further align our code, or ways that you could look at aligning our code with the vision. So from an economic development standpoint, looking at retention, attraction, and redevelopment, the first one is to encourage adaptive reuse and redevelopment. There's a couple bullets under there. There is the option, we talk about overlays. Like, right now, the city has, basically has a mixed-use overlay. It's one of its few overlays. An overlay is an additional set of regulations that is placed on top of an existing underlying zoning district, or a combination of multiple districts in it for a larger area. It's meant to either relax or provide additional regulations to allow something that wouldn't normally be allowed in that underlying district to happen. Silly small example in our current code right now, but if a business or someone, a developer, wants to build apartments in a commercial district, and they want to have residential units on the first floor, you cannot have that under our current zoning code, because it is explicitly against the law. So they have to get a mixed-use overlay to allow first-floor residential. So the overlay just relaxes the regulations a little bit to allow something more unique, something more flexible. So this would be an example of an overlay that would apply to, it could apply in multiple districts, and would really focus on the adaptive reuse of an existing structure, to try to incentivize someone from, to keep someone from knocking something down that could be reused or adapted. Maybe you relax building height, maybe you relax density or setbacks or something to that effect, and parking requirements or something, to try to incentivize someone to not knock something down, but spend the money to reuse it. And so that is, that's something that they, that they highlighted here, is an adaptive, some form of encouraging adaptive reuse and redevelopment. The second piece here.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. Who is the, was that the consultant, or the feedback from some of the other panels?
It was from multiple sources. It's probably from national best practices, as well as, it could have been something that they got back from the community engagement, the stakeholder groups, the first Z-PAC meeting that we held. This is an amalgamation of multiple sources of recommendations based on our code, best practices, other things. And so, and that's common for all of these. So.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, Dave, to interrupt you, but just as an example, if I want to make sure that I'm understanding, I know I've had this once already, but just as an example. So if we're talking about, so if there was, let's say, an older structure, like, for example, Franklin School of Opportunity or something, where everything else around there is houses, but if someone wanted to redevelop that into apartments, that might, I don't know what the zoning is there, but let's say it was not allowed for that many stories of apartments, then this would allow for that overlay to allow that to become, or mixed use, or something like that? Is that, is that an accurate example?
No, it's a good example.
Okay.
Of something that, you know, when it's surrounded by residential, current zoning would be very challenged to allow it to have any commercial use at all in that. And so something like that, trying to encourage adaptive reuse of an old building like that, that you would come up with, and there's just a couple examples there. They talk about building height, you know, those exceptions, or parking, something to try to incentivize a developer not to come in and look at the parcel and just be like, that's a great parcel for X, Y, and Z, or be like, really, to get them to look at the school and say, well, the advantages of using the school versus knocking it down. So. So the other, the second piece there expands zoning for mixed use and housing. When they talk about density bonuses and things, and those are allowing, potentially allowing more, more development on a site than you would normally get with the underlying districts. So there, you're talking about height, you're talking about setbacks, those types of things to try to incentivize people. A TOD overlay would be one other, because we really, you know, our commercial corridors are really Detroit and Madison. And when you talk about TOD, the overlay of RTA could potentially look at West 117th as well, and other areas that RTA has lines. But a TOD overlay, very similar to other overlays, like adaptive reuse, it's what are you trying to incentivize? You're trying to incentivize transit-oriented development. So there's a residential aspect of it that's connected to a transit line by proximity. So that is, that's another overlay that could be considered, specific to Detroit and Madison, or any other corridors that have an RTA line on it there. And that's where we start to get into some of the other things outside of, you know, a TOD overlay. We may want to look at our commercial code there. Do we want to allow by right residential use on a ground floor? If there are specific other things, you know, it's not upfront, it's, there are lots of design considerations to that. You could allow residential on a ground floor, as long as it's not street-facing. That would allow a lot of projects that get hung up with a mixed-use overlay requirement, especially smaller buildings. The last bullet on there is looking at our commercial districts in terms of what's allowed. You know, we have a table of allowed uses that's, that's then further defined by the zoning districts, C1, C2, C3. Are there businesses, do we want to take a look at that and say, dog grooming's one? I know that's, that's a hot topic right now for a couple folks, but, but there are, are there other businesses that were not contemplated, or types of businesses that weren't contemplated in 1996, when probably that table was written? Light industrial, tech-based business, tech startups, coworking, like, that type of stuff is, you know, something that we would have a hard time kind of fitting in that table now? Are there those types of businesses that you want to think through and update that table? It's the time to update the table. How do you, what do you look at when you update that table? These were some of their, I think these are more from like a national best practice, and a lot of cities are kind of rustling with these things that come in that are, they're not really industrial, but, you know, they fall in like tech manufacturing, or how it falls in, and cities kind of are caught in the middle of trying to, trying to identify or something. And then you get into similar use determinations with a planning commission that may not agree with your interpretation, and they don't grant the similar use. And then, and so, just an opportunity to take a bite of the apple of redefining what's allowed, what's not allowed in each of the districts.
Excuse me, Assistant Director Boss. I think Councilperson Marks has a question. I think I might know what it is.
And this is not about dog grooming. Somebody asked me from the county if we were considering that white sewing machine building for kind of a mixed-use overlay, because I know the county, in the city of Cleveland, they're doing something with the West 117th Street RTA station. They're looking at using that land a little differently. And has there been any movement, or is this a possibility for kind of a mixed-use overlay at that property?
I mean, this is the opportunity to look at, like, all of our processes and overlays and plan development, because right now, that, the only way that that, if we're talking about residential in an industrial area, the only way that you can move forward with that would be a plan development. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at right now with that property. I am, I'm part of those discussions, the TOD working group that the county has.
Yeah, so I wondered if you had been part of that.
But that's, that's probably one of the harder But that's, that's probably one of the harder hills, that I've talked to several times, because you have the two uses that are the furthest apart on the chart, and that's residential and industrial. And so, there's ways, and that's, that's where we look at adaptive reuse, you look at other ways to try to make something more flexible to reuse a building like that. Residential's hard, though, unless there's very specific things in place to try to keep, keep from creating a nuisance. So that's, that's my best answer for that.
I just ask to keep an open mind. There's always a possibility that something could be done. I think it would be great for the city if we could reuse that somehow.
I agree. So the next two areas, the first one that we recognized is we need to revise our C4 district, which right now says C4 is schools. So that was done at some point in the last 20 years. It really needs to be a municipal district. This is a pretty straightforward, simple, we don't have a municipal zoning district. And just the, the one real-life example that we have right now is, I think it's Fire Station, Fire Station 3, is that 3, up on Clifton? They're trying to go through a renovation process right now. Their underlying zoning is R2. We don't have a municipal zoning or anything, and so the amount of consideration of setbacks and other variance requirements for doing an addition or something onto a fire station that is a non-conforming structure in R2 makes it very difficult. Having a municipal district, it just, as it says, it streamlines, streamlines the adaptive reuse renovation of existing city and school facilities. So sometimes some of these things, and that's a, and that's a fairly large modification, but it's relatively simple. We would have to define the municipal district, the requirements, and kind of the district standards for that. The other ones, that, one of the big things that came out of, and this is economic development again, this came out of a lot of the stakeholder groups, was to streamline the approval process. A lot of communities over the last decade have moved towards more of a unified development ordinance, which is something that kind of takes all of your approval processes and variance processes and design review and everything, and puts it into kind of almost like a manual that's, it's more easy to read than having to go to 1365 or 1325 for ABR and 1329 for signs, and I gotta look at, you know, 1141 for landscaping, and what district is it in? 1121 for R1. Like it's, it kind of puts all those approval processes and summarizes them, so it's a little easier for people. And also is an opportunity for us to codify, update our design standards, and really kind of put it into the process, that process. And so they've, they've highlighted the need to adopt objective design and development standards for both commercial and residential projects, so that, what it allows is, that allows the administration to, to move those projects through without subjective design review, or it allows like non-substantial, it could allow for non-substantial variances or modifications to be handled administratively, so that it lessens the burden on boards and commissions. There are ways that other cities are doing these types of things that, that help move economic development through. And so, this is another kind of national best practice, and a lot of the, I think, we had a lot of developing real estate and former ABR, BZA folks kind of asking for this. And so it's something that, that we would like to move forward with.
Yes, and to my colleague, Councilman Bullock, but the, the one point that I think Assistant Director Boss is making is important in the sense that, you know, if, if there's an issue that BZA sees as a variance request, and they grant it 99.99% of the time, then that probably shouldn't be a BZA request. That's just an example. Councilman Bullock?
Yeah, this is a very important and worthwhile discussion, also useful as an example of my dilemma as a relatively layperson when it comes to planning and zoning. I mean, certainly attended and tried to advocate for good design over the years and various things, but that was as a council pro, an ombudsman and a representative and not as a, you know, attorney or architect or something. And so, there's a couple things to say first. So, so I don't really actually know whether, where in the, where the needle falls currently in Lakewood, if we're too slow, if we're too fast. I, I hear you loud and clear, you don't want unnecessary delay, you want efficient processes. On the other hand, there's a perception, and I think it's a true perception, that planning and development, not your department, but the profession, the process, the boards and commissions are pro, they have a pro-development bias. And so when neighbors come in and want some kind of, some kind of check and balance on what the proposal is, they'll often come away feeling like they got not much or nothing. Also a subjective, so this is slippery stuff. I know that we have a property rights-based set of laws, and, and the city in general wants economic development, but that is a, that is a decision point potentially, like, you know, how, where should the city fall? And, and I actually don't have any axe to grind here at all, but, but I just know enough to ask the question. We don't have to answer it right now, but when we say these things, for sure, let's cut out unnecessary inefficiencies, and you've got some good ideas on how to do that, but that's a question I think that we should be working through. So that, that's as much as I have. You certainly wouldn't want neighbors to be able to veto based on a small issue, but on the other hand, I don't think it's success if our process on balance would tell neighbors, you have no rights, thank you for your comments, we're gonna not factor them in, even though the intent would be to be respectful at all times, but if the public has no rights, you know. So that, that's a, I, I don't actually know what the right answer is there. And on the hospital redevelopment issue, I know there was frustration by, at one point during the hospital redevelopment issue, I hope that very large and unique development project was a one-off and not used as an index of, that's not the median example, right? Okay, so we're, we're basing this on other issues.
Now, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, Mr. Councilman, this is like, when I had, I was on, I was the Secretary for ABR for four years. I, towards the end of my tenure there, I always felt like I was going out on a limb when I would use the city's front porch guidelines that were published, you know, approved by ABR like 10 years ago, used by the building department as an example for people coming in, that we would see, especially in the summer months, some, some months you would see close to between a half a dozen or a dozen front porch projects coming through ABR, just for fixing and renovating, you know, fixing a porch, but because it was a modification to an exterior structure required by code to come through ABR. So at some point, working with the Chair of ABR, we just said, as long as, you know, if it meets the, the general intent of the front porch guidelines, it's, it's okay to administratively approve that. And that, I mean, it keeps your ABR docket from being like 45 items, especially when you get into that spring and summer month. That is a, that's a small example. The development of, and that's what we say, you know, objective design and development standards is, is very difficult, and finding that, that right spot. It, it, it would be for what I think projects that we would consider minor or routine in the city, just to, to help streamline basic repair and renovation projects for, you know, existing homes and things like that. It's, we're not talking about like people being able to put up a commercial building without going through ABR or through the processes, this is like front porches. So, and this one, this, this hangs heavily on other municipal experience, I think, and so. But with our, the recognition that our standards will be our standards, they're not going to be shaker standards or no standards. So, because there is a fine line, also, you don't want ABR to be a homeowners association for the community, because that's not their job. But, but they are a design review by code, you have to give them standards, you know, to basically base their reviews off of, and right now they have zero. They have a commercial, commercial guidelines, which really is just verbiage and idealistic statements of things that's very hard to pin down, and we worked for two years to come up with residential standards that are about as basic as they come, and they're still, it's, it is a hard thing to do. And so that's, it's saying a lot to go down that road, but it does help streamline your processes. And it gives someone, giving someone the standards knows, they know what, what the objective is, too. And you don't get into this do-loop of like, you know, I never see an end to my design review because I just can't make the board happy. And so if you meet the standards, you may still have to go through review, but at least you know what that objective or that end, end goal is that you should be driving towards.
And, and as a property owner, I mean, I think it would be appreciated, when you're going through the initial stages of process, let's say you wanted to remodel your house and add a front porch or expand it, if you knew that upfront, you save time and money with your designer, seeing that there is a general basis and maybe a couple sample drawings of what the gables look like and what the columns look like and what's acceptable and those types of things. So as, as a property owner, it, it also makes it more efficient for you, and then you get to spend more money in the actual construction. So it's things like that that I think he's hinting at, Assistant Director Ross is hinting at, that I think would be good for residents and businesses, because it would, it would stop us from spinning our wheels.
I, I remember sharing with one of your predecessors a detailed design book from Medina, I think it was, City Medina, which is more than 100 pages of detail. It sounds like we're going for the middle, middle ground. And I was told at the time, we didn't want any of that, and all we wanted was those like eight bullets broadly worded.
It's, it's a balance, and there's a great book that was from our building department from the 80s, it was like, it was almost like a property maintenance guide, but it was very illustrative, like it showed you what different elements of a home were, like, it's just applying picture-based kind of standards to people so they know. Those things go a long ways, and we've kind of gotten away from it to these more like ethereal vision, visionary statements of, which are great, but they often don't help somebody design a building, so. The last slide from economic development, we talked about enhancing code enforcement. This is zoning code enforcement. There is a zoning code enforcement section in Chapter 11. I don't know how old it is, but it is vastly out of date with kind of contemporary practices in how you enforce zoning code, especially when there is, when there's violations or ongoing issues that need to be rectified. The last two pieces there, looking at sustainable development practices. Can you build in incentives for green building practices, you know, by offering offsets, density, height bonuses, or some, some of something? If you, you get something, if you build in something on a sustainable basis. And that's something that we don't have right now that makes it often difficult when people come through review and you would, have you consider, you know, you basically, are you considering solar panels? Are you considering X, Y, or Z? And there's no real carrot or anything to kind of get them moving down that road. And I talked a little bit about the expanding the permitted uses in industrial and C1 districts to try to help drive some additional, and this was, this came out of looking at our, specifically our industrial district is very, it's a very traditional industrial district. Our C1 is kind of a traditional office district, even though we, our office use is kind of in flux, as a lot of places office use was, and, and often unfairly restricts, dog grooming as an example, uses that would be allowed even conditionally in other areas, it just says you can't do that here, because it's, it's an office district. So there's, there's things to look at in that area, so. That was the largest one, trying to be looking at time, conscious of time, but I can keep moving and kind of maybe go through the other ones. So for housing, looking at increasing density, I think that's, that's one thing that we've recognized here. Trying to increase our density brings more units into the market, that's one of the main kind of steps, the things that we can influence in terms of housing affordability, is can you incentivize people to build more housing units and bring more units into the market? Some of this goes into some of those overlays, the adaptive use overlays, the TOD overlays, and some of them you'll see in some of the other recommendations as I kind of move through here, where, where we look at how to get those, that, that more density into some of our districts. ML is one of them, that's our multifamily low-density. If you looked at the zoning code for that right now, what you get is the Gold Coast condominiums, which is probably the most inefficient use of land, in terms of contemporary usage, that is a very old kind of conceptual use of the big green plat with a tower in the middle of it, surrounded by parking. And so, it's, it's very hard to build anything else in that area. MH would be another area, the high-density multifamily, you know, we don't have a lot of townhome developments or triplexes or quadplexes. We do, they're not allowed by zoning, there, there are existing non-conformities that are out there. And so how do we, how do we look at, especially our multifamily areas, to try to build more of contemporary practices with getting more density into those parcels? The other area that we're looking at is our R2 district. The R2, I think, is, is, it's one, it is the largest zoning district that we have in the city. It's where most of our residential parcel, and most of our properties and dwelling units exist. Until we cleaned that up last year, you could not convert a single-family home in R2 to a two-family home, even though the underlying zoning would allow you to do it. If someone built a single-family home and converted a two-family dwelling into a single-family, you couldn't, you couldn't bring it back to an R2. We changed that last year with a, one thing, but now we're looking at, with, with one amendment. But now we're looking at, just based on the, the quantity of R2 parcels out there and the number of non-conformities, that you, you drive around the city, you see three-unit homes, you see those quadplex apartment buildings, typically, and, and other housing products from 100 years ago, typically closer to Detroit and Madison. Is there a way that we can look at our current residential zoning in relation to Detroit and Madison and increase density, or allow increased density as you get closer to Detroit and Madison, just like they did 100 years ago? Is there an overlay, like a TOD overlay, or something that, that you can be allowed in R2, or is there something else that we look at that may allow, under certain conditions and certain locations, duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes be allowed to be considered? That's another way to get density, an easy way to get density into the city. Universal Design.
Council President, couple.
Thanks. I just want to, just want to make sure, and I may be, it may be totally clear to all of my colleagues on council, but just to give an example of this, I have thinking pictures, so I just kind of wanted to provide that, that if you think, and Director Boss, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking here about like on Madison, for instance, where you would have, there are some buildings where it's maybe, it's a couple, a couple stories high and it goes back a little bit down the street, and then it sort of tapers into single-family or duplex homes. So it kind of gives you that buffer off of the main commercial corridor where you might be taking a bus, and then you could have several people with apartments in that building that's right on the main corridor, and then it kind of goes back into more residential. Is that the correct example?
And that's, and that's exactly what we're thinking of. As you look at, I mean, a lot, there's a lot of places where you see that. The first building off of the commercial structure off of Detroit and Madison, that first building down the street, on lots of buildings, is an apartment building. It was built there 100 years ago or whatever, sometimes it's, there's several apartment buildings. That's going to be the struggle with this type of recommendation, is how, how do you step that density back into the single-family zoning that everyone knows and loves for those really long north-south streets that make up the majority of this community? You don't- You don't want someone building a, a quadplex in the middle of Lauderdale surrounded by single-family homes, but you might want that in, to allow that in the first, you know, 200 feet or, you know, four parcels or whatever coming off of Madison or Detroit. Um, so this, and then there's, there's a recommendation for ADUs a little bit down the road, like that's how you get density in a built-out city is there's, there's really no, you know, we're not going to build apartment buildings all up and down Detroit and get the same density. You've got to allow it where the land is and that's in R2 right now.
Yeah. And, and so the rest of our colleagues are aware, that's one point that we, from the Z-Pack, we, we didn't see, see what Assistant Director Boss is talking about directly in the recommendation, so we really pushed Hassel-Lavigne to think about it in that, in Assistant Director Boss will go into a little bit later, kind of an analysis of like, well, our zoning district says that, you know, a R1 lot should be this, but when you actually look at all the R1 lots, like 70% of them are actually out of compliance, so we should probably change our standard to be what everyone else already has. So you, that's what zoning is supposed to be. So the idea behind it is that an analysis of that first 200 feet off of Detroit and Madison to see if we did allow that or had some overlay or an R4 zoning district that allowed for more density, would 60% of the parcels already have that, right? Um, so it's really not changing that much, it's just unlocking the other 40% that don't for potential more density. Um, but it really matches, I think, what most people experience when they walk around in Lakewood, when you go off of Detroit and you see it step back a little bit. Um, but obviously it'll, you know, that, that conformity, I think Hassel-Lavigne said they were going to look into that. The conformity of those first couple of lots would really show whether an overlay or an R4 zoning district would be appropriate there.
Well, I mean, I think that the underlying, before I just leave kind of the density thing, it's, it's, it's coming up with provisions of the code or district standards that allow you to use the existing parcels more efficiently. And I think that's the overarching intent of that because that literally, like I said, is the only way that you can get a lot more density out of a city like Lakewood. And because you, like I mentioned, you're not, you, there's only so many, there's only so many townhome developments, there's only so many apartment buildings or opportunities for like the Barry Buick redevelopment that, that are going to come and go. And so, um, it, it is the, where the land is. And that, that includes ADUs, which is in the next slide. But before I move on to that, there's, universal design ADA compliance is, is obviously a big topic now. We need to make sure that that, universal design principles as appropriate are incentivized or built in, um, to our code. Vacant properties, um, touched on that. In some of these, you know, as density comes in, there's going to be specific considerations. And, and this is how, how do you incentivize? How do you incentivize sustainable development? How do you incentivize, um, you know, universal design? How do we incentivize housing for seniors, that first-floor living type design development? These are all things that you could try to, it's how you structure maybe accessory uses or, or other design considerations, which you have to be careful with in your district regulations. But this could also be, you know, assisted living, memory care, um, those types of consideration. And this is something Hassel-Lavigne has brought up, obviously, but with our input, senior living being another big topic in Lakewood, a big need. Um, there are kind of contemporary considerations that had to be built into that. So how do you incentivize people, uh, to go down that road? Accessibility, um, mixed-use developments, that goes into ground use, like residential use on ground floors. Um, you don't want to disrupt that commercial storefront pattern that we have with residential units, but how do you build, how do you allow someone to build a residential unit that's accessible? Um, and so, and we talked about ADUs. ADUs, that, that, the, the code that we passed, the legislation we passed on ADUs was kind of a first step down that road. We've gotten questions. We have not gotten a single application to date for ADU, which is unfortunate. I think a lot of that has to do with construction costs and a lot of other things. So are there ways that we can continue down that path? Maybe allow them by right and streamline approval or, or other things to try to incentivize um, getting more of, out of that potential dwelling unit source. One of the things they noticed, a lot of cities have removed family, the family definition from their code. That's something that we still have. And then I will talk a little bit more about lot dimensional standards. Um, I've got some slides on those at the end that they did, they did an analysis, a non-conforming analysis of almost every residential district and, and coming into some of those recommendations. So unless there's any specific questions, I'll move on.
Councilperson Bullock.
Thanks. A couple miscellaneous thoughts from, from that section on, um, on the concept of having maybe four or six or whatever number of units back from Detroit and Madison for more density. I think what's been happening in a fair number of cases is the code allows you to take one or two units back to demo them for parking. And that's happened a fair number of times. I don't think it's a rash, but probably a dozen since I've been on. Well, maybe not quite that many, but I can think of a number. I think once, um, once that was denied, um, for a physician's office that wanted to not care for their double and then demo it for parking. So right now we've got the code favoring the removal of density to favor parking rather than what you're describing, which I, I think is an interesting proposal.
And that could be as simple as looking at, especially on Detroit and Madison, do you want to continue having parking as a principal use in your commercial district? Because that is something that somebody could knock a building down tomorrow and create a parking lot and it's a principal use. Like should that be a conditional use that they at least have to come in and get an approval for?
Probably, in my opinion. And, and I'll even, um, you know, to, ideally, we would have enough parking to remove on-street parking on our major corridors. Uh, and then you'd have the, the surface area of Detroit and Madison to do protected cycle tracks and all the stuff we were always talking about, curb bump outs and the real robust pedestrian cyclist and motor vehicle infrastructure that we're space constrained for. And the reason we, we feel space constrained is because we feel that it's, you know, the 11th, uh, uh, bill of right to have on-street parking. Um, so nobody ever wants to touch that. And I think if you were to make such a transition, you'd have to do it with eyes open and do it over time and have a real place to put that. So, so I don't know how you skin that cat. You'd probably want to put it, put parking behind or underneath or who knows? But, um, there could be a, you know, to me, that, that's, that's the future you got to look at, finding ways to, to not have parking take up so much real estate in our space-constrained city. But a couple of quick other things. One is, um, the Barry Buick redevelopment, if that was not a mixed-use overlay, would that be, what zone would that, what, what's built, housing type would that be? Would it be MH, ML?
They could still construct that under the commercial, our commercial code for mixed-use or residential, multifamily residential building.
I, I'm really seeing the style of housing that they are building, that they're permitted.
It's a mixed, it's a multifamily building. They would have a harder time.
Okay.
Um, part of that is, I believe, I have to go back and look at the zoning map before, but that was a mix of residential and commercial parcels based on the depth of that project. That was one aspect that required an overlay. The, the first-floor residential was another aspect that they built into that.
Um, and the, the most important point I wanted to make was, oh, actually on the accessory dwelling unit, I was just talking to Larson Architects, they made the same observation that we don't yet have a, a permit filed to apply for an accessory dwelling unit. I was told it's just an extension in, in the house, partly because of the cost of a new sewer connect, a new electric box, whatever it may be. So there's cost savings to do it as an, an extension to your own home. And I think some of your graphics were going in that direction. Um, the final point would be a, a housing type, I think that's essential, would be school-age kid housing, which is not proper legal term. But multifamily is great. Um, but you know, the challenge that we faced with the Lakewood Hospital redevelopment, we're going to have a great addition, a lot of new inventory, a lot of high-quality, up-to-date housing product, which I hate that term, but anyway. But probably not a lot of school-age kids who are going to walk to school are going to live there because of the housing type and the pricing, right? That's okay for that, but it wouldn't be okay if that's all we ever got with our new development. We want to sort out how to do the redevelopment or create affordably priced, um, housing units that can accommodate two, three kids so that, um, a family can enter Lakewood at an affordable price point and join the community, you know? I think that's what everybody is. I think, I think what we talk about housing prices in Lakewood today, there's two concerns. One is I might be getting priced out, I'm feeling pressure on my own family budget. And the next thought is how about the character of our community, which we, we love so much? Is it going to get squeezed? You know? So is there a housing type that we can incorporate into that list that we just saw that would?
A lot of that, they, they talked about the missing middle here in Lakewood, that you don't have that, that, you know, what's between a multifamily and a single-family home? And it's, it's the one thing that's, has the hardest time getting through, which is like townhouses and condominiums because everybody hates them. Um, I don't know why, but, but every time we've had a, you know, I think the last townhouse project was probably Clifton Point, um, a long time ago. And then we just had Donovan Thoreau and you would have thought, you know, developer was going to burn down, you know, half of Lakewood to build that, 11 units. Um, so, but it's, but that, that's, that's that focus. And then townhomes not, not the end-all, be-all, but that's that missing, you're trying to find that missing middle, you know, housing product or whatever. I, um, because the biggest thing we can do to streamline costs towards affordability is make something allowable that fits into the neighborhood, that they don't have to go through a massive approval process, um, to build.
You think it's probably not new build, but adaptive reuse of the majority of housing stock?
I'm just talking from a zoning standpoint. Like there's not a whole lot you can do for affordability, except allow density and allow it to go through the process smoothly.
Yeah. Yeah. Councilperson, uh, Hamilton Steiner.
Yeah. Um, so going back a little bit, I know there was, um, okay, going back to the Housing Strearship Options Quality. Um, so it says allowing duplex reconversion of single-family homes. So does that mean if it was a single-family home that was once a duplex, that's, it, it's now a single-family home, but it was once a duplex and if someone wants to take it back, that's not allowed?
So it wasn't, but it's still kind of a, it's, it's something that's not incentivized and, and it was actually prohibited, I think, until last year.
Okay.
And so it's, it's something that we're trying to fix.
So what if someone wanted to take a single-family and make it?
They would, the underlying zoning would have to allow that. They would have to be in an R2 to have two, two dwelling units on that parcel.
Okay. So if it's in the R2 and it's a single-family, let's say it's big enough and they're looking to downsize, maybe they just, they have the means, they could potentially flip it into a, not flip, but turn it into, convert it into a two-family home, that's possible?
It is. That's what the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit allows you to do is to add a dwelling unit to an existing home, either through the renovation of the existing structure or through a new garage that has a dwelling unit or something.
So that would fall, that would fall into it? What I'm, what I'm saying is if it's like, it's big enough where it's like a four or five-bedroom house and they don't need that big of a house. So they want to do something, create, maybe they've got some family they want to move in. I'm not, I'm saying converting it into two separate units on that parcel.
Yeah. You, if it's an R2 zoning, if it's, if it's an underlying zoning that allows for two dwelling units, you could do that.
Okay.
By right, yeah.
That might be, and I don't, I don't know how many homeowners have thought about that, but that might be, and, and again, it might not be cost-effective to do it, like if they're looking to run out a unit, but they may be doing it to just try to, try to help a family or a friend and it might just work out and allow them to have an additional stream of income that actually pays for that.
Yeah. That's, 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 that's one area to try, you can try to incentivize people to use the existing structure and just renovate it into two dwelling units. I'll touch on community wellness. These last two are a little bit smaller, but, um, this was the one that, where PD district came up in, in terms of this, but it, it was originally talking about green spaces and some other things in terms of the code, but as we discussed, PDs a little bit more, the direction that, you know, the main direction, I think that we, we want to push the plan development, which every community has a PD chapter. It's, it is kind of the get out of jail card for, you know, if you can't solve it through all the things, can it be a PD? It's not something that you want to do all the time. You, you want to have restrictions on it. The one thing that we do not have that some other communities have in terms of making this process appropriately efficient based on the scope and the scale of the project is we don't differentiate right now between minor and major product, projects. And you could do that. For us, every PD is a major PD and it requires, you know, two trips to planning commission and two trips to ABR before you go to council for that rezoning. There is a, a case to be made for smaller PDs, looking at lot sizes, could you differentiate those between like, say, the hospital site redevelopment and, you know, the Marlowe Townhomes or something like that? Both of those are PDs. They both were supposed to go through the same process. Could something of the Marlowe, you know, 16 townhomes be a minor PD that, that just goes through planning commission, ABR once and then comes to council? Again, you're streamlining the process, you're lowering the design and the entitlement costs for a developer, um, that, you know, would likely result in lower, in lower end costs on, on the other side. But we're also looking at extending the PD review timeline for council from 45 to 90 days. Because that, given the hospital experience and Martha and Donovan Thoreau, there were some other ones that 45 days is difficult when you've got a lot of other things going on. So we're looking at it from a lot of different perspectives. And so the, the PD is just one thing that may see some other changes based on other things that we're talking about, universal design, sustainable design, like a lot of those things that incentivize people to go down that road, but also looking at it from a broader scale of how a project moves through that process more appropriately. Park district regulations, kind of along that same, um, realm of a municipal zoning district, we really need to flush out our park district regulations. Now I talked about design standards, um, with that objective design standards, that's, that's kind of bringing this back into consideration again. And then our sign regulations, um, also need to have a top-to-bottom look at. They are about 10 years old. They're very difficult to, um, basically administer and enforce. Um, and so that's, that's also something that, it, signs are just one of those things that you have to look at on a regular routine basis to make sure that you are constantly up to date, uh, with how you regulate content-neutral code. Any questions on that? You're starting to see some of these, yeah, some of them are becoming more, a little more redundant and some things kind of themes start to come up. I think the last area, mobility. This is an area to talk about sustainable mobility and parking. As you mentioned, Councilman and Chair, you know, parking is like the third rail. It is what everything else is built upon in this community. Um, and so it is an emotional topic and will continue to be that and, but, but it is something that we need to look at in terms of our parking requirements, um, for, for all uses. Um, you know, does, do, do senior developments need to have the same level of parking as a multifamily building? Some communities don't. They have, you know, for every unit, it's a half, half of a car, uh, one car for every two units or something like that. There, there's things that we can look at. Incentivizing or requiring EV infrastructure, do we need to look at that? Active transportation, not that there's a whole lot of new road construction. I know we're going down the whole, the complete streets and that whole part of that, but does the end result of the complete streets legislation? does the end result of the complete streets legislation get built into zoning in some way, shape, or form? And then green infrastructure as well. Updating our landscaping code to match any incentivize or incentives that we build in for sustainable initiatives as you get into the green infrastructure. Any questions on mobility?
Councilperson Kepel.
Thank you. I just had a question, and I don't recall the answers in the, would this be addressed to in terms of areas with parking lots, in terms of pedestrian walkways within the, like, within the parking lots?
I think that, that's all part of that, like parking lot, like, we have a whole section within ABR on parking lot design. It, it has cross-references to landscaping and some of those other things, but it's just, are we at a point with contemporary practices where that's just built into parking lot design? Do you, do you look at things for green infrastructure and other things that are common aspects that our engineer commonly asks for in terms of best management practices for stormwater, like those things that, that's part of, I guess, 30 years of plus of code, of pieces, you know, here and there, and how you kind of aggregate a lot of that stuff into a more readable, more concise, if that makes sense?
Councilman Bullock, you have another point?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Good, first of all, good thoughts on all this, Mr. Boss, including incentivizing, there's some, something else you had in a, in a previous section on economic development, but trying to, I think it was incentivize density, or maybe with sustainable design features, really, in a lot of ways, the pay dirt there would be high, our, our, our plan calls for deep, deep retrofit efficiency, it's building envelopes, it's highly efficient, highly insulated, and then highly efficient system, so probably, you know, here it would be at least getting ready for heavier-duty electric boxes in your garage, in your, in your home, because if you're going to convert to a water heater or heat pump that's electric, that's a significant potential load increase. Probably, what I've always heard is you can't require it because the state and federal home builders' lobbies will come and wall up you, but you could maybe incent. And on green infrastructure, how about tree pits, along with what you've got there?
All those types of details, and you're right in that regard, Councilman, in terms of, it's, it's, how do you incentivize people to go down that road? By adding, reducing parking requirements, or allowing them to go higher, or, you know, it's all in balance with what the neighborhood, or the, you know, the context would accept, but finding the ways that you can incentivize people to go down those roads. The specific aspects of those things could be called out as we get into district regulations and things like that, but that's kind of the, the point of these recommendations.
Yeah, yeah, it's thoughtful. But I know that the way that you, first of all, I'm not, is there any opportunity to expand sidewalks? And I think that might have been a previous, is there room to do that anywhere?
Yeah, I'm sure that in terms of the, I think that, when you start talking about, like, accessibility and, and universal design and ADA, that's a great consideration, especially on our commercial corridors, that, you know, right now we have a zero-to-five setback. It's like, you know, maybe if, if that, just as an example, an incentive would be to increase the size of the sidewalk, wouldn't require a setback variance if, if that, you know, the five feet that you want to go beyond, if you want to go to six feet, if that six feet is dedicated towards increasing the size of the, you know, the public walkway or something like that, doesn't require a variance.
Okay, yeah, there's, that's, that's all really, yeah, really well thought. Thank you.
The last section, I'll just run through real quick, and it's not the last section in the report, there are, there are other miscellaneous recommendations that, that was kind of our laundry list of things from the last 10 years of like, you know, uncovered patios, to like, the laundry list of things from the building department, where zoning does not jive or actually conflicts with current building code. We want to make sure all those things kind of get ironed out, there's a lot of those things. But as the Chair mentioned earlier, the lot standards applicability analysis, this is one of those things where they looked at all residential parcels in the city, and, you know, in terms of frontage and lot size, what doesn't conform? Like, where do we sit with the standards that we say we uphold? What does the city look like? And so when you look at something like, and it's, it's very detailed, the GIS analysis, but you look at all of the, you know, low-density R1 parcels in the city, which is one of the smaller zoning districts that's out there, but only 45% of the existing parcels conform with our lot standard for size. And so that tells you there's a problem in terms of what you say the standard is versus what actually there is. And so you, you want to try to reduce the non-conformities as much as possible, because that reduces the requirement for a variance. It also, you can also reduce, you want to be cognizant also of not creating a whole bunch of opportunities for subdivisions. If you make it, like, if you over-correct in terms of like, the size of the lot or the frontage, you could really make a neighborhood like R1L, like Clifton Park, really upset by saying, well, now we're going to half the size of the parcels, you know, for the standard parcel. And then everybody who has a huge lot is like, well, that's great, I'm going to sell this third and this third, and then you can, someone else can build those homes, and you're like, whoa, that's not what we wanted, we just wanted to bring it more into conformity. And so they went through-
Director Vargo stood up when you said that.
So they're, like, in this regard, their recommendation is to reduce the R1L lot area, you know, from 14,000 square feet down to 9,000 square feet. And so that would bring, you know, that would bring in, 89% of parcels would conform at that point, which is a good number. The subdivision opportunities at 9,000 square feet is, I think it's 15%, so that's the lowest amount in terms of that compromise. And then looking at the lot width, reducing from 70 feet down to 50 feet. That would bring, as you can see on there, that brings, that brings your conformity up to 92% from 74%. As you kind of go through these, R1L is probably, you know, there's, there's worse, R1M, medium, you know, 32% of our lots right now are conforming with our code, and so trying to, to get that back, I think I'm trying to go to one of the worst ones, and I can't remember if it's R2, or if it's R1H, there you go. So high-density, single-family, right now, there's only 26% of parcels conform with that. And so, and then the frontage, 25% of parcels meet that frontage. And so again, requires variances. If you want to do anything, you want to build a house, you got to get a variance for the frontage or the lot area. And so reducing that from 5,000 to 4,000 square feet, and the frontage from 40 to 35 feet, brings you into, you know, there, you can see that in terms of size, now you've gone from only 8% or parcels are non-conforming, and then 1% of parcels would be non-conforming if you went down to 35 feet. But your subdivision opportunities at 4,000 square feet and 35 feet on the right-hand side is still less than 1%. Each, they did it for each of these things to come up with these recommendations, to kind of right-size some of these. And the area, you know, the main kind of benefit from something like this is, there are parcels out there that are non-conforming, that are larger. Had a question last week, one at the corner of Halsted and Athens. Guy wants to split his lot horizontally, and right now, it's just, it's, it is a, would require substantial variances at 5,000 square feet. If you reduce that a little bit in terms of the frontage requirement, the area requirement, it might make the BZA consideration of that, and also, when you then have to consider setbacks and all those other things, it might make those variances a little less substantial in terms of that ask, it might make building a small house or something on that corner more tenable. So, as I mentioned, so that really the next step is going to be the heavy lift, and that's taking your recommendations, taking your recommendations as a Z-PAC, bouncing them off of these recommendations here, and then starting to work through the district standards. So really looking at single-family. What do we want to build into single-family from these recommendations in terms of what needs to be done? I think a lot of the residential stuff will follow. As I mentioned, R2 is probably going to be a heavy lift in terms of looking at higher density in some of those districts. I don't think, you know, in terms of zoning, the zoning map, all of those things are kind of fair play at this point, and looking at, you know, is there R1 zoning that needs to be R2? Are there parcels that, you know, is there a new R4 zoning district that we want to look at, you know, for the first five parcels off of Detroit and Madison, or something like that? Or is it better just to have some kind of an objective distance or something off the corridor that's built into the existing R1 or R2 zoning district if we don't want to change it? There's a ton of ways that you can kind of skin the cat on a lot of these, the density questions and a lot of these other ones, but this is going to be the detailed work that you'll probably see me again, if you're not involved in the Z-PAC, or you want to come in and sit on the next Z-PAC meetings, that we will definitely come back before council with the kind of the, the recommendations or the, the objectives that come out of the district and use standards. And again, I believe, you know, the overarching intent of this is that you see me probably, hopefully, two or three times again before we get to seven with the draft, and you get these, you know, whatever form this, these, it's going to be legislation, and it's going to be a lot of legislation to implement these changes in the zoning code. And so you, you need to be familiar with it before we get to that point, so that it's not overwhelming, so.
Councilperson Kepel.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a note, too, is that this is also an opportunity for us, coming up as we have our community conversations in the wards, to be talking with residents about some of this and helping them understand how it's relevant to them. It was, it was kind of, when we were trying to get that survey out to people and get participation, is trying to help people understand why they would care about zoning code, and what does that mean, and what does that mean for my reality, and, you know, some of the questions we get a lot about affordable housing and all these other things. This isn't the one-stop-shop to fix all affordable housing issues or anything else, or climate issues, but it does touch on a lot of our priorities and accessibility and, you know. So it's sort of, I think that's an opportunity for us as we do those community conversations to be talking with residents and bring that feedback back as we go through this sort of iterative process. Just wanted to make that observation.
Thanks. Councilperson Evans?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Thanks, Assistant Director Boss, this is, you know, incredibly helpful, great conversation, and thanks for walking us through this. I have any number of thoughts I'm not going to get into today, I won't belabor this, but I do want to say I'm incredibly encouraged by the work that's been done on this. I think this is moving in the right direction. For me, this takes our zoning code from something that's a restrictive document to something that's constructive. It's no, it's no longer the, this is why you can't do this. It's, I'd like to do this, and here are the three tools that we have to be able to do that, so I certainly appreciate that, and my, you know, my biggest hope is that a lot of the things presented here that we saw today don't get watered down as we move through the process. You know, I really like the direction, and I hate to kind of slide back to, you know, what people might consider more of a, of a safe space, so I'd like to, as much as we can, continue to be aggressive on that front. And to President Kepel's point, I think, I think that's a great thought, is how can, and this is so much what we do, how can we communicate better the things we're doing here to our constituents? And I think this goes back to what Councilman Bullock was talking about earlier with, you know, where do, where might residents plug into these things if they're, you know, if we have compressed timelines or things like that? And I think that's on the city and on us to make people, you know, make it really clear that, you know, when we have Planning Commission and ARB, those are public meetings, that that's your chance to engage, and that's the appropriate place to do it. And like, so many people I talk to are just no idea. It's like invite-only, if I got a letter, you can go, that's fine, but that's absolutely a public meeting and the best place to get your thoughts heard on all this kind of stuff. So I think that's something we, as a group and the city, need to work on, is getting that message out better to residents. But again, thanks for this work, I'm really excited by this, so looking forward to moving this forward. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that as we move into our community conversations, I think, I'll work with the clerk's office, I think just a blown-up zoning map, and then maybe some of the slides about conformity of parcels would just be really helpful, because people would look for their neighborhood, and they would see what zoning it is, and then look. So I, I think it's, that's a way to engage folks a little bit.
Replace that mural.
Yeah, we could. Be interactive would be cool, we could zoom in. Yeah, it's iconic, but yeah, whether, it's a different discussion in this committee. But I do think that that would maybe engage folks a little bit, and then, you know, let them know the process is happening, and that should be a good bullet point for all of us to cover. Any other thoughts or questions, concerns from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Councilman Bullock.
Thanks. The, just a couple, a couple points. So the parks zoning that was touched upon, are we, actually, first, before I want to say that, it seems as if the zoning code was written after the built environment was constructed, if we have so many non-conformities, you know? What do we do? Pass the standards in the 40s after most of the city was built or something, or 20s or 30s, or, you know? So, it's interesting. And I think it was probably updated over time in, in different-
Yeah, that's, like, that's, that's just one of the issues that with the city code, I know Lakewood went through a pretty thorough zoning code update in 1996. That's, that's the basis for most of our zoning. If you think back to, you know, the 80s and the 90s of doing that type of work, I think from a planning and a zoning standpoint, single-family was the king. And so, and that, I think that kind of reigned from probably the 50s, 60s, 70s, all the way through, that that was the general trend for things, and it, some areas of our zoning map still kind of blow my mind in terms of looking at, you know, the buildings on Clifton, and the large apartment buildings and stuff on Clifton, and, you know, especially around my neighborhood, is that a lot of those are non-conforming, and at some point, somebody made the decision that we wanted to contemplate single-family homes on all those, replacing all of those things. And so it's, so I feel like a lot of this, as we've moved through, a lot of these topics and the recommendations we have identified, it's like, you, you want to take your zoning code back 100 years, when you, when you start talking about density.
They were playing, they were playing defense, in other words, at some point mid-century when classic homes were being cannibalized for mid-century apartments as opposed to the, some pretty, some glorious apartment buildings on Clifton also.
I think it's just, Councilman, I think most people just saw single-family homes, that that was, that was the direction they wanted the community to go, and they wanted to get rid of the multifamily.
I see.
Homes.
Well, and as, as you say, and I appreciate Councilman Evans' point, that you're changing this from a reactive restrictive document into a set of tools to facilitate something forward, but another point you're, you're making, you know, Lakewood hasn't gotten bigger since the 70s when we had 70,000 people. What's changed is that people don't have a median of 7.2 children per household in these tiny homes. So unless that's changing, and I did tell a colleague in Lakewood Democratic Club that he needed to get cracking on to help the schools out, but he said no. The, what you're driving at is that we've got to somehow find more units in the same space to add density and population where the family size or the unit size is going to be smaller, so that is a challenge. And that leads to a, a final point I wanted to make was, so the parks zoning, I take it, only the city uses park zoning, right, because we're the only owners of parks, we're not probably adding parks unless we are, but if we had dense housing for school-aged children, typically, a family's going to want access to a yard, but if it's a townhome, you're going to have, you know, maybe that could work, maybe not, so maybe what you do is you have access to a park, a neighborhood park, and many of our corners, but not all of Lakewood, have access to a nice pocket park and so forth. So maybe that would be a way to have the best of both worlds. So my parting question is, you don't have to answer it right now, but how will we know if we're successful? It's in like, step six and seven, so, or let's say we adopt this, it's in place, we want to give it five or 10 or 15 years, how will we know what metrics to watch to know How will we know what metrics to watch to know if our intended outcomes are actually on track to be there? Because of course, we're really trying to kind of shape the flow of a river current because the market can't be controlled. We're trying to guide something that is pretty unpredictable.
Usually it's the number of variances that people apply for and the types of variances. That's one thing that has driven a lot of the code revisions over the last 15 years, like garage height. That was a huge effort of, of our department like 10 years ago or something like that. That's the number of variances for garage heights, they, they just drove a change in how we defined accessory structure height. And then the accessory structure max height, they alternate. It dropped the number of variances like the next year and, but much like adding lanes to a highway, just the variances came back because people just wanted taller garages. And so it's, it's difficult to track. But I think it's, it's, it's having a user-friendly development process, at least from my standpoint, from someone who wants to renovate their front porch all the way up to a major, you know, a major plan development, is that, are you, are we doing everything we can to balance an efficient review process or entitlement process through our boards and commissions all the way up through council that reasonably accommodates public engagement, public feedback, public hearings in the most efficient and kind of contemporary way? And that's, that's just, as we look through that, and that's the use of objective standards to reduce, kind of to call out cases that don't need to go before boards and commissions so that you really focus everyone's time and energy on the projects that need that attention. I think that's kind of the general standard that we're looking to get. And it's very, it's, it's, it's hard to get to and it's hard to measure success on that, but a lot of it you look at.
It'll take decades, I think.
You look at the, you know, how long does a project take to get through your entitlement process in comparison to other communities? Because a lot of that, that can be a deciding factor too in terms of a development, whether or not it comes here or it goes to Cleveland Heights or it goes other places.
Yeah, and if you, and just looking around the county at zoning, Northeast Ohio is, you know, our, our code is a little clunky, but some parts of the county, I mean, they're referendum zoning. So you would literally have to go to a vote to change the zoning of a parcel to the public, which I think was put into restrict development, right? It was, it was a, a way to stop people from developing property. So each community kind of has its own unique challenges as it relates to the zoning code. And I think ours is, you know, how do we want to guide as best we can that river, right? That it's going to go and erode certain parts and grow in other areas and how can we guide it to help meet our community vision and meet what our values are? And to Counselman Bullock's point, you know, the demographics, and I mean numbers, you know, of, of the community have changed, right? There are less kids per household. What does that mean for our housing units? How should we adjust there? How should we think about that? How should we incentivize the investment? And, and so these are all, so it's like we say, well, there's more density. Well, when there's 12 kids in a house, but, you know, there's a quad plus next door, it's actually the same density. There's just different family units, right? And so it's all about how we do that. And I think this process has been going really well and I, I think it will lead us to a really good place. So thank you, everyone. Any other comments or questions folks have? No? You good, Assistant Director Boss?
I appreciate, if you do have feedback on any of these recommendations from the report, I just asked it, you get it, get it to me or if you can, within the next two weeks so I can provide it back to, to our consultants and we can get it all meshed. Thank you.
Thank you. Without objection, we are adjourned.